We will get started. Patty, before we do the pledge, could you do some of the housekeeping on translation and all that good stuff?
Good evening and welcome to the January 14, 2025 City Council meeting. The Spanish translation is available, so this meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. Buenas tardes, esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda. Zoom webinar participation information is available on the City Council posted agenda and for members of the public who wish to attend. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Well, everyone, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. United States of America, and to your brother, our brothers and sisters, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Patty, if you do the roll, please.
Councilmember Barajas.
Here.
Councilmember Barrera.
Here.
Councilmember DeRigo.
Present.
Councilmember DeLaRosa.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Mayor Donahue.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Renee, can you let us know if we have any new employees to welcome and introductions?
Yes, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director to step up, introduce any employee, and then Lisa, Community Development Director.
So I have a new construction inspector. His name is Robert Went. He started back on December 9th, so we welcome him onboard.
Thank you.
Lisa Brinton, Community Development Director. We have three new employees this month. Aquantas Garlington is an administrative aide for the Rental Registry and Rent Stabilization Program in our Housing Division, and he's a resident of Salinas. Leon Hansen is an office technician for our Administration Division, and he has 14 years of hospitality, scheduling, and management and payroll experience. Karen Zapata is an administrative analyst one who has joined our Permit Center team, and she previously worked as a coordinator at California Rural Legal Assistance Performing Labor Law, so we welcome the three of them to our team. Thank you.
Our HR Director Marina, introduce.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm going to be introducing the new hires for our Police Department. In the month of December, we hired two police recruits and one police officer. Jesús Francisco Rodríguez Pérez, police recruit. César Pablo César Díaz, police officer. Francisco Pérez Rojas, police recruit. And we had one promotion in our Police Department. We had a police services technician that promoted to police recruit. Thank you.
That it? Okay, thank you, everyone, and welcome aboard. Before we head into closed session, I will take any public comment regarding just the closed session item. And public comment is limited to two minutes. Any public comment on the closed session item. Otherwise, following the closed session, we will reconvene at 5:00. Yeah, no, public, yeah, public comment is limited to closed, closed session. Just for the closed session item, and then we'll go into closed session. Any, any public comment? Okay. We, we are going to go to closed session, and we will reconvene at 5:00 and have at it. Thank you. I forgot I had one of these, so good. All right, it works. Welcome back. Before we get started, just to report out that there's no action out of closed, closed session to report on, and we will proceed before we get to an opening statement that I have on behalf of the city and public comment. We do have a proclamation, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Sandoval to read it to us for Martin Luther King Day. Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King devoted his life to advocating equality, social justice, opportunity for all, and challenged Americans to participate in never-ending work of building a more perfect union; and whereas Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities; and whereas the Service Act enacted in 1994 designated Martin Luther King Jr. Day as a National Day of Volunteer Service; whereas since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighbors and communities on this day; and whereas Dr. King transformed the concepts of justice, liberty, and equality, and bridged the gap between our founding ideals and the realities of our time; and whereas each year his life, his dreams, and his achievements are commemorating, uniting people from all different cultural backgrounds on a day of celebration for all people everywhere. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dennis Donahue, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, do hereby proclaim January 20, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and call upon the community to pay tribute to the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you. And, yes. We see the proclamation. And should we see the proclamation? We're going to invite Dr. John Silva to share a few words. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council. This is great.
Yeah, no, yeah.
This is great. There's been a lot of, I'm following in the tradition of retired Pastor Steve London from First United Methodist Church, who was responsible for the King Day celebration the last few years. He retired, and a couple of community activists, including Andrew Sandoval, got together and came up with this idea of continuing it despite Pastor not being here. We also got some good allegiances and collaborations from the Interfaith Alliance, and including the new pastor at FUMC, Reverend Shinggo, Shingya Goto. So it's a collaborative event this upcoming Monday. The, we're going to start very early. We're going to start 9:00 over at 142 West Alice Al Street, where the old county jail is, and we're going to start the commemoration there with a city member, a citizen, speaking the words that Coretta Scott King spoke in December 22, 1970. So she's going to start the day off with words commemorating Dr. King and Cesar Chavez's work together. We are then going to have a processional from the old jail to City Hall here, and hopefully we'll have a nice program. There will be a keynote speaker, there will be a blessing by the Reverend, there will be multimedia, there will be music, there will be a chance for public comment. So the main thing is I'd like to get the word out to the gathered public here that we're going to honor this commemoration, this proclamation, with the day in his honor here, starting at 9:00 at the old county jail. We hope to be here by about 9:15, 9:20 for an hour, 90-minute celebration. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, thank you for your work in the proclamation. We appreciate that. Before we go to public comment, I have a statement on behalf, behalf of the city. We recognize the concerns many feel about what the next four years may bring. I want to remind our residents that Salinas is a welcoming city and has been since June 2017. This means we are steadfast in our dedication to serving the entire community, ensuring public safety and fostering trust regardless of immigration status, citizenship status, or nationality. Our diversity is one of our greatest strengths, making Salinas the vibrant and resilient city we are all proud to call home. Together, we will continue to support and uplift every member of our community. The City Council will be working closely with the City Manager and the Police Chief to keep the community informed as we receive information and as questions come up. So thank you. With that, we will proceed to public comment. Can I get a show of hands of how many folks want, would like to speak? Okay. We will, that, we'll go, we'll go ahead and keep the normal two-minute mark, and, and then what, what I generally like to do is have, have everyone, I know sometimes we catch you in mid-sentence, so it can finish, you can finish the sentence. I am a, but I am pretty good at picking up run-on sentences, so we don't do run-on sentences. We finish the sentence. So with that, we will, we are open for comments from the public. Mr. Freeman, welcome.
My name's Bill Freeman. I'm here today to demand the resignation of real Salazar Jr. for assaulting my friend and, and City Councilman Andrew Sandoval before the election at your event at Mount Mike's Pizza and Creek Bridge. You're a criminal, you're similar to Donald Trump, and you need to resign your position today, tonight, because you assaulted a person for no reason other than he wanted to listen to what you had to say at your event. And you're not an employee of Mount Mike's Pizza. You had no right to slam and break his wrists. What you did is assault, and you need to resign today.
Thank you.
Welcome, new City Council and Mayor. I know some of you, I've worked with some of you over the years, and I appreciate you being here, being up there to listen to our positive comments and negative comments. The responsibility of all of you up there is huge, and thank you for being there no matter what I say. I wanted to thank the graffiti abatement department. I have people in my neighborhood, we have Neighborhood Watch, they call in things when things happen, and my graffiti man, he called it in, and you folks took care of it within 48 hours. Thank you very much, because we're going to keep our area clean no matter what happens. Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval. Dedication, tenacity, honesty. You look into difficult situations, which make you unpopular sometimes, but you're bringing money into the city by making sure that people are doing what is written in contracts and in other arenas. And we, your constituents, thank you so very much. And just remember, when somebody's talking about something, it's not that they're being angry at you. We're just trying to all work together to help each other. We always hear there's not enough money to do things. Well, then we might have to make sure the contracts are adhered to properly and make sure the city gets the money so we can do other things. And then to the new City Manager, I request you assign appropriate staff to ensure contractual agreements are being adhered to. At $300,000, we are expecting great progress from you. I know you have a lot of, a lot of experience, and I thank you so very much for taking the job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, City Council. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I am here to offer a prayer to the room, to the City Council, and as a blessing to the start of this new term that you're all beginning, which is going to be wonderful and prosperous, I am sure. If anyone would like to join me in this prayer, please bow your head. It is the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Jose Guerra Montebia Community. I want to welcome all the new members, DeRigo, DeLaRosa, Mr. Donahue, and the old members. Hope we can all make it work, especially in this community that we have, beautiful community. I just want to say, you know, our Montebia Park is coming along. We're getting there. We still need a lot of help. We need help with the Monterey Bay Soccer League. Ms. Barrera, if you can reach out to your friend, Mr. Rojas, and let him know that he was playing soccer without a contract for about a week or two, that we noticed that, and hopefully we brought that up to many people in the city. We talked to Ms. Ambriz about it. We're going to do an investigation, find out if we can have the school be responsible to make the entrance through the front of the school instead of the back where the park's at, which should not be done. Other than that, I want to thank all of you. And then again, for the migrants that are being picked up here and there, there's a lot of confusion on that. People should do a little bit more research. The people that are being picked up have, from what I found out, criminal records, some of them. I'm not going to say, I didn't do the investigation, but it has been said that, and blaming everything on Trump. Trump's not even in office yet. You can't blame him for that. Not only that, but, you know, have some compassion. If you want to do a demonstration, come down to City Hall, go to a federal building, go down to the, you know, the Border Patrol Department, if they have one here, or go down to ICE and do your protest there. Do it in the right areas. Don't go down the streets and run around and yelling and honking. I mean, do it in the right area so people can hear you. And don't do it on the weekends. Do it on a weekday, when people can really listen to you. You want to be a real activist, do it the right way. That's just my opinion. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name is Denise Estrada. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new council members. I'm very optimistic for the year ahead and the work that you have ahead. The Salinas Women's Club has liked to announce that they have established a legacy scholarship for two Hartnell College people who want to go on to four-year degrees. You have been invited to a meeting on the 25th at the Welcome Center to honor Ruth Andreessen. She was a founding member of your Historic Resource Board, served 48 years on the Monterey County Office of Education, and her legacy would be carried on with these scholarships. I've left a flyer with the information about these scholarships here. We do want to support our Hartnell students, and she loved the legacy that she could leave behind, further education for the future for these students ahead. Thank you very much.
Buenas tardes a todos, a los nuevos concejales, y a los concejales santirres. Muchísimas gracias. Mi nombre es Jesús Estrada. Soy un organizador de vivienda con centro de abogacía de la comunidad, mejor conocido como CCA. Yo estoy aquí para conocerlos y que me conozcan porque queremos trabajar con ustedes en tema de vivienda. Sabemos que aquí en Salinas es una necesidad muy grande el tema de vivienda y también derecho de los inquilinos. Por eso estamos aquí para que nos conozcamos y esperamos trabajar con ustedes este año y el año que viene, como estuvimos trabajando con los concejales que están presentes aquí, como Tony y Andrew, y los que, y los salientes. Así que muchísimas gracias. Solamente vengo para decirles esto. Gracias.
Good afternoon, members of City Council, the new ones and the ones that are already here. Thank you so much. My name is Jesús Estrada, and I'm an organizer with CCA, and I'm here because I want to get to know you. I want to work with you. I am an organizer that is working the topic of housing. This is a big need in the community. So there, we're also working with tenant rights. So mostly I'm here just to welcome you, to say that we want to work together. I want to work with you, as well as we work with Tony and Andrew, and we work with other council members. So basically, we're going to be working together a lot this year, and I just wanted to say hi so we can get to know each other.
Thank you.
My name is Jose de Jesús Gómez, and I live in the East Side, and I'm proud to live in the side of the town. So I heard that, you know, the city is one, you know, in the plan, it's got to, you know, beautify the city. So I hope they don't forget our area. Couple of weeks ago, I was here, you know, just asking, they go and paint, you know, like repaint my sidewalk red, because I always have a challenge with, you know, people parking in the red zone in half of my driveway. So when I call the police, this is also a challenge. You know, I get investigated and, you know, like, says, you know, we're busy. You know, one time I talked to the police officer and says, they were busy. I goes, yeah, but you have the tools and the information that I provide, so they can go attack the people and not be parking in there. So we, you know, if it isn't the plan to beautify our city, you know, let's start, you know, we need the co-employment police officers. You know, we need everybody that is willing to go and help us, because, you know, there's a lot of, you know, like abandoned cars. You know, I know our area is overcrowded. So, you know, like, whatever makes our homes beautiful is the garbage containers that are like in the sidewalk, you know, saving a parking space, a parking space. So I know, Mr. Mayor, you know, you said that, you know, we build the, you helped build that Goblin Library. So why, you know, the library is there, but you know, we need like law and order in our streets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Cameron, Concerned Salinas Resident. Welcome, Mayor Donahue and other council members. It's nice to see fresh faces, hopeful for a new year. I'm hopeful that you will not only stay on top of city priorities, there are many. I heard everything from potholes on down when I ran for City Council, but I subject to you that the most important priority should be our environmental health, because without that, we have virtually nothing. I would like to invite you to the CDPR hearing that will be taking place at the Steinbeck Center this Thursday, 5:45. They will be discussing T-Lone 13D, the third most commonly used pesticide in our area. It has very many concerns. One of my primary concerns is they're talking about doing air monitoring, starting in 2027 annually. Well, how do they do that? Why is the delay for the beginning? And how do they do that when the closest air monitor is near O'Leary Elementary School? How have they been monitoring the air in Salinas? For almost a decade, we've had no air monitor system. So when you talk about T-Lone 13D, it's banned in 34 European countries. It was found toxic enough that California Department Pesticide Regulation banned it from 1990 to 1995. And now they have two standards they've come up with. One that goes with Dow Chemicals ruling, and one that goes with the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. They're only going with the environmental ruling or suggesting it 100 feet away on certain hours. That fails at many levels. First of all, farm workers don't work in eight to five. Secondly, there aren't signs posted. Thirdly, I mean, the list goes on and on, and there's all kinds of fallacies. And when you look at, for instance, the, the poor planning that was done in putting McKinnon Elementary School in an island surrounded by that, are we going to eliminate the school or what's going to happen? So please come find out more Thursday, 5:45, National Steinbeck Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's David Masoniv, and I want to welcome the new members and everybody and the mayor. Thank you so much for your contribution to running our city. I thought it was interesting that the mayor started out with a conversation or a, a statement that I totally disagree with. So I'm going to explain it to the best of my ability. In 2017, the City of Salinas, along with the county and the state, went to being a welcoming community, which essentially means that if anybody comes here illegally, we're not going to ask for their citizenship, we're not going to ask for any of these things. If they break the law, it's okay, because we're welcoming. I'm not in favor of welcoming. I think helping hand with people. I want to, we want to protect everyone who's here regardless of their status. I get that. But at the same time, if there's, there's a, there's a new sheriff in town, and it's coming, and whether you agree with the, the upcoming president or not, there's going to be some issues coming up about illegal immigration. And I, what I want to say is the, the term is illegal immigration, which the word illegal means breaking the law. So if we're going to be law-abiding citizens, if we're going to stand up next to the Constitution that we swore an allegiance to when we took the office, which happened here, then we need to follow the law as it's written. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I represent the Montebia Community, along with my compañeros, her friends. Any accusation of violence should be investigated and resolved. If any of the council people are accused of violence, you need to resolve it, because if not, it's going to be a problem that is going to be problematic for your term. Welcome. I'd like to start on the positive. The other night, I was driving in the dark, and then all of a sudden, a bunch of lights started flashing, and I stopped, and a person walked in front of me. The lights activated because somebody was at the walkway. I would have never seen them. And I probably drove by people a thousand times, not knowing. The implementation of those lights are magic, and that is an improved process. Another process that needs to be improved this year is your management of projects. Last year, we watched millions of dollars go up to where we don't really know how that money was being organized. Many of the financial decisions were being made at the last minute to where the board had to approve that night on activities and projects. So these projects move forward justified by the board's inability to plan properly. This year, I challenge you to figure out how it is that you're going to manage your projects, figure out how you're going to have meetings with the community months ahead of, rather than the day of. We don't want you to justify your decisions based off of incompetence. I just challenge you to think about it. And again, there should be nobody coming up here accusing your members of violence, especially as we go to celebrate Martin Luther King and his solution to nonviolence in terms of political action.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members and new Mayor Dennis Donahue. My name is Jaycee Gonzalez, and in 2017, I was part of the team that created the first Public Arts Commission for the City of Salinas. And then in 2018, I was appointed by late Mayor Hunter. Today, I'm here to thank new Mayor Dennis Donahue for allowing me to remain in the Public Arts Commission. It has been an honor to me to continue working together for a better Salinas, where art has become a well-being and central to our lives. So thank you. I look forward to working with you. I also want to acknowledge the small support from the Beautification Grant, from the street force City Councilwoman Gloria De La Rosa, and in Chinatown. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Donahue and the rest of the City Council. I'm here to speak to you as how your rent ordinance affects landlords like me. We own properties. I did not know that there was a register for apartment owners. I don't really watch a lot of TV. I don't have a computer, and this is my phone. From what I understand, we are only to be allowed to raise rents by 1.57%. These are the latest, I'm researching it now for all of our, for our properties. The one I'm on, I was insured through State Farm. I was paying about $1,679 to $1,800 yearly. I was canceled by them. I was canceled by them on November 13th last year, and my property insurance at that unit has gone up by 300%. I am now paying $7,618.08. That was the only one I could find that was below $9,000 because a lot of insurance companies do not take five-unit apartment complexes. Another increase that has gone up more than 1.57% is sewer at that address. It went up by 15.88%. And it's getting very hard, a lot of my units, I've had long-term tenants, they are below market value, and I'm trying to get them up, but 1.57% won't help me much. We bought property as our retirements. The way it's looking like now, I'm 63 years old, I may have to go out and get a job to subsidize my units because I can't get my rent up enough to make it pay for itself. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
Mayor Donahue, City Council, Larry Hirahara, Salinas Chinatown. Congratulations and good luck to the newly elected officials to govern the city of Salinas. I first would like to say I'm very encouraged that the new police chief, Acosta, has already reached out to Salinas Chinatown to introduce himself and his desire to work collaboratively with us. Chinatown stakeholders would like to invite the police chief to spend several hours with us to tour, for a tour of Chinatown to show the assets, challenges, and history of the area. We thought it was very helpful to be able to communicate with the city manager on his recent tour and would like to repeat that process with the police chief. Another issue, Union Pacific Railroad, recent modifications of their right of ways by creating barricades has created an increased, an increase of unhoused people in Chinatown. We know the city is working to develop more emergency shelters and affordable housing, but there needs to be a current strategic plan to cope with this sudden influx and problems into, into this neighboring area. Finally, I want to develop an appropriate trash receptacle and a servicing of them for Chinatown. We see the trend in Chinatown that trash receptacles are used if available, but absolutely must be maintained and serviced. The quality of life and sense of community is greatly reduced when there is trash everywhere. We are inquiring and seeking funding for trash receptacles similar to ALCEL, but we need the city to commit for servicing them. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Larry.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm Eleanor Elliott. I live in District Five, Andrew Sandoval's district. And I just want to say, you know, we did a lot of, I'm a community activist, and we've done a lot of work over the last year or two with the past city council. We collected thousands of signatures to bring forward to talk to you about rent stabilization. And we came here talking about Andrew. We don't want to lose him. I don't want to see anything change. The old city council members, this is, this is directed to you new people up there. I saw them in our neighborhoods, on the east side, in District Five, in District Four, and all over the city, walking the streets, coming to us and meeting us, meeting their constituents in our neighborhoods. I hope to see the rest of you doing the same thing. Because once a month, you know, we come here, on Tuesdays, we come and we bring our, our concerns to you, but I would like to know that you already are aware of our concerns and that you've met with us halfway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Olga Reyna, I welcome all the city council, Mayor Donahue. Well, I'm with BHC, Building Healthy Communities, and I myself have worked very hard on some of the issues Salinas is facing. Homelessness is an issue that is not going away. We need to start doing something for the homeless, and they're part of our community, and I care very much about them. The farm workers are another big area that we work with, the housing. I, I, I'm looking to, forward to seeing us all work together and keep Salinas getting bigger and stronger for the community, for ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, welcome new city council members, Arice Chago Juarez, neighborhood organizer for Building Healthy Communities, and we're, the lead coordinator for the Thriving Neighborhoods team, Thriving Neighborhoods, where we believe everybody in our community, all our neighbors deserve the opportunity to thrive. And that, that will be our, our, our marching order, to really carry the message of our neighbors, do our best to make sure that their concerns are being heard, because we know that the degree of, of engagement is, is, is pretty wide here in Salinas. I say that because we know that there is a community that, a big part of our community that sustains the agricultural industry here. Many of them are undocumented, many of them are, are having to live with this fear, a fear that, that will impact the quality of their work, that, that impacts the, the dynamic of them and their children, that impacts actually, you know, how their children are going to get to school, and if they're going to come back, and hopefully their parents or their family members will be there. We, the, the message from, from our, from the, the president-elect has been otherwise, and our neighbors, my neighbors, our neighbors deserve that confidence that the quality of life will not be interrupted, and they will be able to, to continue fulfilling their duty, their tasks, working here and being a part of Salinas. So thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos, primero que todo quiero presentarme con los señores concejales, mi nombre es Iveta Hernandez, pertenezco a la Escuelita de BHC y vivo en el distrito número cinco. También quería decirles que estoy emocionada de que estemos trabajando juntos para un Salinas mejor. Existen muchas preocupaciones para la comunidad, que si hablamos de todas hoy pues no, no nos alcanza toda la noche. Entre lo más importantes tenemos temas como la vivienda, educación, seguridad, y estaré presente lo más que pueda para poder ser parte del cambio, para que mi hija y los hijos de toda nuestra comunidad puedan tener un futuro mejor. Gracias.
Good afternoon, members, city council, mayor, my name is Iveta Hernandez, and I am part of the Escuelita Cívica from BHC. I'm from District Five, and I'm so happy to be here. I'm excited to be working for Salinas and also working to make this a better place. There's a lot of issues that I want to touch, but I can't do them all today because then we would not finish today. But I think there's some topics that do need to be highlighted, as for example, housing issues, education, and security. So this is the change that we all need to improve our children's lives and for all the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, mayor, city council members and city attorney. My name's Rolando Osorio, I'm here today to welcome the new city council and to give an open invitation to be able to meet with me whenever you would like. I plan to be involved creating community events in the community, sitting on the nonprofit boards that I currently sit on, and to be participating in city commissions. I'm thankful to have met most of the council. When I was first elected, I remember sitting down with Mayor Donahue and being able to have a conversation with you. I truly felt that I got to know you, and I deeply appreciate that. Councilwoman De La Rosa, when I first ran in 2020, you supported me, endorsed me, and fully backed me. Today, I look forward to continuing to work with you to ensure that our neighborhood, District Four, is being taken care of with the improvements that still need to be done. Councilmember Barajas, I remember sitting down with you and having lunch, being able to have meaningful conversations when we would see each other in public. And I also personally know a lot of your family members, and they're great people, just like you. Councilmember Salazar, when I was first running in 2020, I remember checking in with you periodically, I appreciate that. And to my two colleagues who have had the privilege to serve with councilmembers Sandoval and councilmember Barrera, it was truly an honor to work alongside both of you, even though we didn't always think alike, agree on every issue, we always found a way to compromise and align when it came to matters that benefited the community. And finally, Councilwoman De Arigo, I've heard nothing but great things about you to everybody that I've spoken to, and I look forward to getting an opportunity to meet you. Thank you to all of you for your time and dedication, and I'm eager to see what we can accomplish together for our community. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Elena.
Mayor, city manager, city attorney, and council members, my name is Yolanda Hayes, and I'd like to welcome all the new members and the returning members to our, back to the dais. I really appreciate all of you. And I want to say Happy New Year to everyone as well. I haven't seen you all, so I just thought it was time to say Happy New Year. I'd really like to forget 2024, it was, I had, I hate, I hate to say it, but it, the politics involved were not to my liking. There was a lot of disrespect by everyone, excuse me. But I do want to thank everyone for their hard work, because it is hard, what you did and what you do and what you will continue to do. So, without my tears now, I get emotional, I'm sorry, but I do want to say that we look forward to a better future. 2025 is going to be our best year ever. I hope we all work together. I hope we can all achieve a lot of results. I hope there's no more bickering, I don't want any more bickering, let's get the job done. And I do want to say that a quote from the Bible, I have turned my life around, I do go to the church, I go to church now, which I didn't for many years, so I'm very pleased with that. But I do want to remind you all, let him who is without sin throw the first stone. And I think that's everyone here. We all have sinned, and so please, let's stop the bickering and get 2025 off to a good road, off to a good start. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elena.
Hello, mayor, city council, I'm Emily Aida Cota, I'm an artist and a community organizer. I actually am the program and leadership assistant with the Milpa Collective, so I just wanted to make that initial introduction. I know this past season, as election seasons are really tough, so I want to congratulate each and every one of you on your efforts. You know, we as a community recognize that, and we've seen a lot of money, you know, get poured into campaigning federally and locally both. So with that being said, I stand here as representative of local youth, of system-impacted folk, of labor and farm workers, and I want to say that we'd like to see the same for our efforts. You know, we, we recognize that certain departments here granted surpluses of money, and so we want to see those be reinvested. And we have so many bright and talented and truly genius young people here that I've gotten to work alongside personally, and just want to uplift that they're so strong in their efforts and not just academically or professionally, but also in just how they go about life, you know? And those strengths deserve to be highlighted, and they deserve to be invested in, and not just, you know, socially, but also fiscally. And so I know there's a lot of work to be done, especially in the next four years, but I want to say that that just furthers the importance, you know, of investing in community. And so with that, I want to say thank you, and I look forward to working with y'all to make that happen. And good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is George Villa, I'm also with Milpa Collective, I'm the program assistant manager. I'm also the founder of Team Villa Boxing Gym, we're located in 832 South Main Street. I'm here today to also congratulate the city, the new city council, and also commend the former or the previous city council for their amazing work that they also did. You know, there's, there's areas in East Salinas that had been forgotten and overlooked for a lot of years, and I appreciate the work that has been happening, the New Hebron Heights Center, the Caesar Chavez Park. And as you know, you know, there's also have been a crime reduction, so, but there's still only one library, you know, that the boxing gym is still only really underfunded, and the main coach is really sick right now, and there's like youth in, in a lot of spaces. But really, you know, you talked, you opened up with, you know, your public comment about the sanctuary city, and I really appreciate that because as many committee members here have shared about the anxiety, what's happening, and under SB 54, right, which protects and serves the immigrants, and what's happening right now with the, with the raids, we want to ensure to have a safety in our spaces for our undocumented people here. As you know, undocumented immigrants contribute to billions to this economy. You know, we tried, oh, they're, they're taking our jobs, we've tried that, that didn't work. So we urge to continue to, even with law enforcement, that they also continue to protect and serve the community through SB 54. Another issue, you know, or another thing we would like to also talk about are the issue with housing, you know? There's a lot of inequities in housing, and we also want to support the issues with the rent stabilization a lot of the CCA members here have, have talked about. But more importantly, you know, we want to be able to facilitate the conversations that are happening, especially in areas that we, we're forgetting. We also have a record reduction process with POP 47 that has been working. So thank you very much, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Very good, thank you, thank you for coming.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members, members of the public. My name's Steve Voskis, I'm the operations manager for California Water Service, also known as CalWater. I'm here to share with everyone that CalWater has filed our 2024 Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which we file every three years. This is required by our regulators, the California Public Utilities Commission, or the PUC. The PUC has one year to review our proposed projects for the years 25, 26, and 27. Some of the projects include our main replacement program, replacement of wells and booster pumps, our meter exchange program, the new generators and panel boards, all to improve our reliability and our ability to provide safe, clean drinking water for residents of Salinas. The PUC wants to hear from our customers, they are hosting a public participation hearing, a virtual meeting, on January the 23rd with two sessions, the first one at 1:00 PM and the second one at 6:00 PM. We encourage our customers to participate and make comments on our proposed infrastructure plans. More information is available on our website, calwater.com, and you can call our office at 831-757-3644. If the council would like to receive the presentation, we'd be happy to work with staff to schedule a date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, my name is Eloise Jim, and I'm a Salinas resident, and welcome to the new members of the council, and the mayor, the new mayor. I just, before I forget, I do want to say that sometimes I call in, and I haven't mentioned this to, I think his name is Isaiah, who's the audiovisual guy, but one of the councilmen, Anthony Rocha, gave out my whole telephone number, and I think you need to fix it so that when you're calling the telephone number, it should just be the last three digits or something, because it's a privacy issue if you give out somebody's total telephone number. Anyway, that's just a technical thing, but I also want to back up about District Four and Larry Hirahara's Chinatown plea to do better there. I'm on the Historic Resources Board, and the last time we had the Asian Festival, the, the, the police there were just not really doing their job. They were in some kind of a vehicle, having their lunch or something, they weren't watching out, and the, the whole festival, it was a mess, it was garbage everywhere, and it shouldn't be like that. So also, I've developed- So also, I've developed a PowerPoint about the past Chinatowns in California and Pacific Northwest, and it also includes some historic immigration things that I would like to present before the next festival. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Lee, I know most of you up there, and worked with you many years now, and a couple of retreads have shown up, so I hope you've got your wisdom caps on, because we're gonna need it. It's gonna be a tough road ahead. So new ideas and old ideas, so I hope they mesh and do some good for the city. So I'd like to talk about the Sunshine Ordinance. I've been kind of reading a little bit about it, and it kind of helps the Brown Act along, and it makes easier for people to understand how it works, what sunshine means, and it also helps with getting records, a record request. So it has some good things. San Francisco has the most information on the web, and also there's a sunshine nonprofit ordinance. So if the city deals with a nonprofit, has a contract, they give like $25,000 is what San Francisco used, because they have the most information, so this is what I have to go on at the moment. They would abide by the nonprofit ordinance, which means they have open meetings twice a year, and so certain methods of reporting they must do. So there's two things that we can look at, the Sunshine Ordinance of the city and a nonprofit Sunshine Ordinance. I think that would allay a lot of things that have been happening as of late. The other thing is, I'm listening to people, and their concerns are social, not police matters. The state required that the cities put together a band with like a paramedic or a social worker or a healthcare worker, respond to calls that are not police business. The only thing I've read, I've heard on the news as of late is Santa Cruz has implemented this. This is now a state law. We had someone talk a year ago that the county health department was going to get it going. I haven't heard or seen or whispered anything about that happening. So that needs to get going. I'd like to hear the news about how good it's happening in Monterey County in Salinas, as well as Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone up there. I'm happy to see some of our members back, and even our mayor, so I'm glad to see all of you here and some of your new ones here. But, you know, we have a flag out here that's lowered, and no one's mentioned why it's lowered. That's for Ms. Arbott, President Carter, that was buried last week. We should honor that. Not only that, how many of you remember when Mrs. Carter came and dedicated our Healthy Start Building on Williams Road? I was there. I think Gloria, you may have been there, and Tony, I think you may have been there. But I have pictures of that. Anyway, the reason I'm really here tonight, New Year's, I had five of these in my yard, one next to my front, my car door in the front, and the other four in my backyard. For you that don't know, these are from the fireworks. It sounded like a bomb going out in my backyard. Somewhere, we need to get together and really work hard and stop them. Some of you that helped stop the shooting for New Year's way back, if we could do it that, like we did, took us about five years, going door to door and store to stores and schools, I think we could help do some of this again, because this could have landed in my house, and I wouldn't have been here tonight. It was pretty close to my, rough of my house. Now, this is the first time I've had these big ones like this in my yard, but we need to do something about it. And these drones and stuff, maybe get somebody out there and doing them, because we have them every night. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maria. Okay, this will be the last public comment before we see if anyone wants to Zoom.
Hi, I'm Susan Marcellus. Welcome to the new members. I'm concerned about these comments about our farmworkers. I can't imagine life without produce, and I have a feeling most people in this room can't imagine life without produce. And so what does that bring up for me? There's this other thing, though. I travel the world. I cannot enter a country without a passport. So there's this dilemma, and I wanted to bring it up neutrally, not emotionally. So how do we solve this? Because we have to value our workers, and they work hard. They work hard when we've got fires, but guess what? Other people get excused from work, but they're out there working. So what do we do? But I find it's polarizing when it's discussed. And so is it illegal? It is. But what are we doing to solve it? That's my issue. And I'd like to see a nonpartisan group be brought together to solve it. Is it the H2A program that we need to help solve it, so people that are illegal don't feel they have to hide? But I see sometimes when with the work, the rent stabilization, I was at some of these meetings, and you folks were not, a lot of you weren't even on the meeting, but past people weren't even at those meetings, and people from the county weren't at those meetings, and ag workers weren't at those meetings, and these poor workers were at those meetings, and they're getting misinformation, thinking work stabilization's gonna save my life, which some of us that have ever been in work and rent stabilization programs, they not gonna save your life, it's gonna hurt landlords, so they get misinformation. So I'm really concerned that we get the right people in the room to really help solve this issue, and it's nonpartisan. Thank you.
All right, this will be the last public comment.
Thank you. Wes White, Salinas, Monterey County Homeless Union, co-president, actually, a part of the California Homeless Union, part of the National Union of the Homeless, which was actually started by the Poor People's Campaign, a national call for moral revival, or at least this iteration. I'm actually the premier chapter nine years ago to start the reestablishing the National Union of the Homeless. We are the charter member. This Martin Luther King Jr. Day will be their ninth year, so next year will be their 10th year, and I'm looking to have some national presence here in Salinas, Martin Luther King Jr. Day 2026. And I guess I just want to rattle off a little bit of stuff that I've done, you know, I support just about every underdog community there is, any underserved community, LGBT, undocumented, pesticides. There's gonna be a pesticide hearing at the Steinbeck Center on Thursday at 5:45. Encourage a lot of people to come out and talk about how dangerous pesticides are. Also support Black Lives Matter, Brown Lives Matter. I'm NAACP Political Action Chair. I've supported Milpa, CCA, BHC, UFW, SAFEAG, Safe Schools. I'm also heavily committed to my faith. I've been going to church at First Baptist since I was a little kid. I'm the blacksmith for the streets of Bethlehem every year, for the last whatever, 12 years. So I encourage you to come out, it's the first week of December every year. I mean, I do not take my mission lightly. When I hear that your mission starts outside your front door, it really does. We have a third world nation operation right outside our front door. People live in a first world lifestyle, but yet you're doing it on the backs of everyone else, and that's the equity I'm looking for. I'm a teacher, and that's where we need to be, is stop the sweeps.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do I have any comments from Zoom?
Robin, go ahead, two minutes.
Good evening, and thank you very much, Mayor Donahue, and welcome. I think like many before have spoken about our undocumented process and being an advocate for those individuals. I certainly do have concerns about that, and I think that what was said before about having a nonpartisan mediator step in. Mayor Donahue, I'm hoping that you take the reins and work with our state officials on this. It's really, it's not fair to those who come over legally, but I have to say, and I know this is something that you don't want to hear, but what I find true is that there is a glaring hypocrisy with ag, and, you know, they want to bring in far right-wingers, but yet they're happy to have undocumented individuals exploited working in the fields, and that needs to stop. And we have tremendous issues with human trafficking, and we keep turning a blind eye to that as well. And many of you sitting on this council were heavily funded by ag. And while ag may not have come to you and explicitly asked for favors, they are in fact implied. And candidly, if you're not going to be equitable, please do us all a favor and remove yourselves from this council, because I think we're in for some very challenging times. And Mayor Donahue, it's my understanding that you prefer short meetings and that you're also going to remove the opportunity for Zoom. And I think that that will invoke more chaos and more terse rhetoric from individuals.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, is there another?
Lizbeth Camacho.
Hi, good afternoon. Liz Camacho here, District One resident. I am calling in on behalf of the Christmas in Costa Park Committee. This last event was our fourth year and was a tremendous success. We had 400-plus student volunteers and a growing community support. I want to thank our prayer warriors that come at every city council meeting. They came over reminding us that Jesus is the reason for the season. Lulac for their generous bike donations for all of our lucky kiddos. The Hitchcock Road Animal Services Shelter for their participation in an amazing tree display. Our fire department for bringing Santa. Police Chief Acosta and his team for spending time with our families. The Parks and Rec Crew, Kristen, Vivian, Anna, who brought the event to life with her creativity. Special thanks to Councilmember Sandoval and our amazing city manager, Rene Mendez, for attending. The Dream Academy, all of the volunteers, Tradición Por Siempre, Adán, Luis, and Alexis Mejía. And also special mention to Anthony Rocha, Alex Ayala, Chris Barrera, Orlando Sornio, the one and only Olga Reyna, Chago, Nidia, and the Escuelita members for always lending a hand. And of course, we have a long list of community sponsors. And I just want to invite all of you guys. Hopefully, you guys could all attend 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there one more? Okay.
Nidia Soto, two minutes.
Si me escucho?
Si. Adelante.
Buenas tardes, Nidia Soto. Soy organizadora de la Justicia Económica con BHC, equipo de vecindarios prósperos. Estoy dando la bienvenida a este nuevo concilio y a todos los concejales anteriores para este nuevo año. Hemos escuchado las necesidades de nuestra comunidad más grandes que representan vivienda, educación, economía, nuestras calles, parques, bibliotecas, y centros recreacionales. Es fundamental tener las agendas interpretadas el tiempo más preciso que se pueda, ya que esta última reunión fue a último momento a someter agendas con interpretación española. Y les llamamos la atención en eso, por favor. Sabemos que hay cosas que pasan, pero que no vuelva a pasar lo menos posible. Invitamos a este concilio a trabajar juntos con nuestra comunidad para mejorar nuestros alinas. Los invitamos a conocer cada vez cada distrito. Solo podremos lograr mejoros si estamos juntos.
Good afternoon. My name is Nidia Soto, and I'm a community organizer for justice and economy with BHC. I'm here representing the community, and I want to welcome all the new council members and also say Happy New Year to the other council members that were still here. I am here because there's a lot of needs in the community, and I want to highlight some of the needs that the community have, like, for example, housing, education, economy. We also need security, parks, recreation centers, and libraries. All of these are one of the biggest needs that the community have. Another thing that we need to have is the agendas. They have to be translated in time. In this case, they were translated last minute. We know that things happen, but we really depend on these agendas being translated, so we hope this doesn't happen again. And we are also willing to work together. We invite you to work together to improve this community, to come together, get to know the community, and visit each one of the districts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will close public comment, and we will proceed to the consent agenda. There are eight items.
You have to do the Levine Act.
Levine Act, so, okay. Do I have to read it? Okay, yes, okay. Chris, yeah, would you go ahead and read the Levine Act for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And councilmembers, this is something that we'll do at the start of each meeting. So Government Code, Section 84308, the Levine Act requires the mayor and council members or any parties to a proceeding involving a license, permit, or other entitlement for use pending before the city council to disclose any campaign contributions over $500. Within the preceding 12 months, the disclosure must include the amount of the contribution and the names of the contributors. So we'll start to the right of the dais and ask each council member whether they have any campaign contributions to disclose related to any item on tonight's agenda. Councilmember Sandoval. Councilmember Barrera.
No.
Councilmember Barajas.
No.
Councilmember Salazar.
No.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
No.
And Councilmember DeRigo.
No.
Mayor Donahue.
No.
Thank you for handling that. All right, we will proceed to the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda. Would anyone on the council like to pull an item for separate voter discussion noting that the council member that pulls it, that the discussion will be limited with just that council member, and then we'll proceed to public in Zoom? So, council?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Okay. But I have to, yeah. Okay, Councilmember Sandoval.
Yeah, Mayor Donahue, I have two, just, I think it's exciting for the public to know about, 696 and 699.
696 and 699, okay. All right.
I have a question. Can we make a comment? Is this when we pull it to make a comment now, again?
If you pull the item, you can make a comment, but it's limited to the council member who pulls it. Now, if you echo one of Tony's items, then you would be able to comment.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment.
Okay, on which one?
On, I think he said council member Barrera. I think he said 24699.
That's one of them, yeah, okay. So Tony and Gloria.
So that one.
Okay.
And also on the cadets, the fire cadets.
All right, a twofer, okay. All right, so.
Just a comment.
Margaret?
Margaret, I'm sorry. Council discussion, first, you're up. Okay, are there any public members that have a comment on just the consent agenda in general? Okay, or a specific item?
I'd like to comment on the last item on the agenda, and that is committees.
That's, that'll be the consideration item, different than public comment.
Okay, so not now?
So we're not there yet.
Okay.
You have to pull it, sir.
No, no.
No, the committee item will be taken up separately, and we will have an opportunity for public comment.
You'll get to do that. Yeah, okay.
699.
Okay, 699, okay. Okay, and that's already been pulled? Okay, all right. All right, any public comment from the Zoom crowd?
None on Zoom, Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right, we will start with 696, Tony, then Councilmember Barrera, then- All right, we will start with 696, Tony, then Councilmember Barrera, then Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you. Well, I just would like, I don't know who's the representative from the fire department. I think this is exciting news. Is this the officer of the year?
No. Last year.
Okay, last year.
You'll get to do one next meeting.
You know, if you could share with the public this exciting project that's happening with the fire department?
Approximately about two years ago, we reenacted our Fire Explorer post, which is a program to let our adolescent youth from high school age up to timing out at 21-years-old to get a glimpse of what it's like to be a firefighter and be a first responder. We went through a recruitment process, which involved filling out an application, going through an oral board process, where we then selected 15 members of our community from various high schools and schools throughout the area. We put them through a mini academy where we drill with them for four hours once a month with at least two of our fire department members to get them some exposure of physically what we do, along with, they do fire station ride-alongs, so they can see actually what we do on a day-to-day basis. Our membership is down to 11 now, as we've had members timeout or decide not to continue with the program. So a goal of 2025 is to get our numbers up to 20. This memorandum of understanding that we are asking to be signed by the city manager is to change affiliation from the Boy Scouts of America to the Public Safety Cadets. What that would do is it saves money, as the process is a little bit over 50% cheaper to register annually, which we have to do for our department members, along with our youth cadets. And then the logistics administrative process that is required to reregister is much easier with Public Safety Cadets. And the Salinas Police Department cadets are also utilizing the Public Safety Cadet services. I believe their memorandum of understanding was signed a year, if not two years ago. So we are getting in alignment with the Salinas Police Department.
And I think you remember correctly, with these types of programs, you were just able to hire several firefighters that are living here in Salinas as well.
So our goal is to begin our recruitment process, not when they're at the junior college level or just graduating from high school, but to start getting our community members to be thinking about the Salinas Fire Department as a career, you know, much earlier in life, as our recruitment tactics have changed over the years and how we really have a drive to hire local community members from Monterey County and Santa Cruz County. This gives us that ability to really start grabbing onto these young individuals and make them want to be Salinas firefighters from a very young age. The Salinas Firefighters Foundation is in the process of creating a grant scholarship program, so we intend to have some of our cadets apply for this scholarship, which would allow them to then go, fund them to go through EMT School and the Fire Academy, which are our two biggest qualifications that we like to see when people are applying to become a Salinas firefighter. So recruitment's starting very, very, very early, not just when you want to be a firefighter, but what do you want to think about being a firefighter?
Thank you.
Yep. Can I answer any other questions that members might have?
Yes. We should all be proud of our Salinas Fire Department. You know, for many, many years, we wanted to see a program like this. We had the Explorers, we could say Fire, but it was being put off for a lot of reasons. But now, I feel so proud, because it's giving them that opportunity, our youth, to become firefighters, locally, our local youth. And I have a nephew in the city of Palmdale. He just became a cadet. So we're like, yes, we want you to become a firefighter. So what a great opportunity we have as a city. And I want to thank all of you. Thank you. And I like the part where it says, "We're going to save money." So thank you to all of you.
Money and time are big things. Our drills are the first Sunday of each month, other than July, where we have our drill postponed because of the Fourth of July weekend. But to any council members, Mr. Mayor, city attorney, if you would like to see what a drill is like, you have an open invitation to come see what our drills are. They're always at Fire Station 3 at 1,300 hours. There's a life lesson that goes on with it, the drill. And then, of course, when we're not running calls, training for calls, or sleeping, we're doing details and cleaning toilets and kitchens and things like that. So that's incorporated into the drill as well. So it's not just how to be a firefighter, but also how to be a good human being and participate in your home and help your parents out and do chores and things like that. So a very well-rounded program.
Wow, thank you.
Perfect, thank you for the report. Thank you for calling that out, Councilmember Barrera and Gloria. Okay, item 699. Mary Ann, you had a question or a comment?
I love when you say you have a question. Listen, what Tony and Gloria were going to comment on it, there was detail to add on that, so I thought I'd add on to it. But I want to hear what they...
Okay, all right. All right, Councilmember Barrera, any specifics on 699?
There's no doubt, when there's good things happening, we need to take out the banda. So I would like somebody from the staff, whoever's in charge of this, if you can just share with the public the benefit of this for our community, please.
Okay, so I think we are looking for David Jacobs on this one. Renee, is this?
Yeah, no, I'll, let me pull it up, but yes. So, this is a program where we're going to connect with the Ecology Action to help us do a lot of the stuff that happens when we want to beautify areas, so the trees, design, and so forth. So this allows us to partner with another agency, another entity to help us with that. They do this for a living. I mean, we actually partnered with them, and the city of Waterville partnered with them as well. So they're very well at putting this together. So that's what it's going to be, and working with the community, working with staff, and helping us kind of guide through as we implement the program.
My comment is, this is a long time waiting, and I'm glad to see it come forward. And yes, the beautification of the LSL area is important, and I think it's just going to bring the businesses, and it's just going to give them that feeling of, we care. We've always cared about the LSL. But now it's going to happen. It's going to be clean. It's going to be beautiful. We want lights on the trees that are going to be put in the LSL area. We want it to look like Main Street, like downtown, for Christmas this coming year. Those are my comments.
Mary Ann?
Well, I'm proud of our area. At least we don't have all the weeds that you do have downtown. But that's finish, clean these weeds. Market Street, when we put those blocks or whatever you want to call them out there on Market Street, and took away our parking, did nothing. You have a few trees there that are producing leaves, and the rest is weeds in there. Very few people have any flowers. And it, people were against that to begin with, that had businesses there. And we did not listen to them. I argued about it, and we took away the parking and put those barriers there. The only barriers that really work are the crosswalks. The others, forget it. It's a mess. And at night, when the lights aren't working and it's raining, I've seen people hit those things. No, it's the truth. I mean, it's ridiculous. Take them out. Put out our trees and whatever that they're, and take care of what we have. Take care of the trees and the flowers. Water them instead of letting the weeds grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay, all right. Yeah, no, I know. With that, I think we do have a motion to, and a second on the consent agenda, and I think we are ready to call for the question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification and for the public, to the makers of the motion, please confirm we are moving approval of items 733, 731, 696, 698, 699, 704, 707, and 724.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and call for the vote on the consent agenda, which includes all items. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Di Arigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will go to a consideration item, reviewing city council committee and regional board appointments. And we will get started with the report from the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I went ahead and placed copies of the list of the city committees, regional boards, and appointments for 25 on the dais for you as a reference, and it's also available online for the members of the public. Annually and following an election, the mayor is required to make appointments to the city council committees and regional boards. In January of 2023, the city council directed staff to present the proposed appointments to the city council for ratification by resolution. Salinas City Code Section 2-1 allows for the mayor to make appointments to the city council and subcommittees and regional boards upon assuming office at a city council meeting such as today. Section A3 of the city council rules of procedure and order of business also allows the mayor to make such appointments. The city council may continue ratification of the appointments by resolution or delegate the appointment authority to the mayor as authorized by the city code. Should the city council choose to delegate appointment authority to the mayor, it is recommended that the city council also rescind Resolution 22552 that was approved in January of 23, requesting or requiring the ratification at a city council meeting. Mayor Donahue would also like to extend the opportunity to council members to serve or volunteer to serve on the following committees to ensure we have a quorum at all these meetings. As you will note on your sheet that's on the dais, there are a couple of vacancies, or it says to be determined. Education and outreach, we have one vacancy. Salinas Downtown Community Board, one vacancy. Fireworks Subcommittee, we have two vacancies. And litter and debris, we have two vacancies. With that, Mayor, I will defer it back to you.
Okay, thank you. I believe when we were updating the list, I had Councilmember Barajas added to the Downtown Community Board. So those are filled. All right, all right, all right. Any questions from council?
No questions, but will we have the opportunity to...
Yeah, just...
To appoint our commissioners?
That is forthcoming. Any questions?
Yes, I do have a request to remove myself as the alternate for the Salinas United Business Association representative position. I have a conflict of interest there, as Suba is my current employer.
Right, and based on the list I have in front of me, we've done that.
Okay, I didn't get that update.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Barrera will be handling that. Anything else? Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes, Mayor, I know that in our previous meeting, you mentioned that Councilmember Barajas, Di Arigo, and De La Rosa expressed interest in the rodeo oversight committee. And I'd just like to ask my colleagues to consider supporting my continued appointment to the rodeo oversight committee. I'd like to share some of the work as the former chair of the rodeo oversight committee. We now have quarterly reports in accordance with the lease. With also, with help of residents like Ms. Joan Bennett in the front, we've recovered thousands of past due ticket surcharges to the city of Salinas, which will now go to supporting our residents' many requests. And we are currently working towards a more transparent processes there. But there's still some concerns about equal access to facilities, fair and transparent pricing for all residents and community groups, and opening those meetings to the public so the public can participate and comment in those. There's also some opportunities for more events in collaboration with the Monterey County Sheriff's Department, so I'd like to ask any of my colleagues if they'd consider supporting my appointment on the rodeo oversight committee.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Anybody here? Am I sure? You see the comment? Yeah, exactly. All right. Okay, anyone else on the council before we noted? We'll consider that separately. Anyone else on council before we go out to public?
I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I'd also like to join the fireworks Subcommittee to help make that form.
Okay. Very good. We'll get that noted. All right. Okay, let's go out to the public for any comments on the appointments.
My name's Steve Retzke, and I live in the Laurelwood neighborhood, which I believe is Mr. Sandoval's district. I'm also a member of the Local Stagehands Union and the International Alliance of Theatrical and Stage Employees. Both of these facts are germane to why I'm addressing you tonight. Tonight, I would like to express my support for increased transparency as it relates to the Salinas Rodeo Complex. As a citizen, I ride by the complex almost daily, and rarely do I see that great group of resources fully or even partially utilized. This bums me out for many reasons. Primarily, it's a beautiful site. Bringing more events to the site brings more people to the area, and that area can handle the crowds and the traffic, and it brings more revenue to the businesses that are in the area. More businesses means more taxes collected. That means more city government, resources that can come back to the city as enhanced services for residents. As a stagehand, I ride by the complex, and I see event spaces rarely used. And this bums me out, because these are wonderful performance venues. They're going foul, and so many of my colleagues could use work in this area from those venues. In both cases, the common problem is the lack of utilization of a fantastic city resource. Our union has investigated this situation in order to find out ways to get more events to the complex in the hopes that we may get more work for our members. What we have discovered is that management of the complex is by committee, but the operation of the committee is opaque, and they're not very amenable to either development or negotiation. This is why we are here to advocate for greater transparency in the operation of the rodeo complex. IATSE has been trying to find ways to get more events and work at the complex for years. The major stumbling block to our success, aside from the lack of transparency, is that the events of the complex are produced by a single producing agent, one that does not see the value of hiring globally, highly trained... So we advocate for more transparency, and Mr. Sandoval to represent for us.
Got it, thank you. All right, anyone else in the public?
Robin Lee, I advocate for Andrew, because he's a bulldog when it comes to honesty and transparency, and we need a bulldog. Also, yay for the internet, because not only was I researching the Sunshine Ordinance, I looked up at the rodeo, and the piece that they had on the internet says that the city does not support them, they support the city, is basically what it says. We do not take money from the city, we give the city money. However, that's not true, because you give services to the rodeo and other events there. So there's a falsehood on the internet in that regard. And so I'm just, we need the bulldog, and we need someone who's honest and transparent. And take a look at Sunshine Ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Name is Eric Peterson. I'd just like to agree with Robin Andrews, and more for District Five in two years than his predecessors did in 12. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, Eloise Schim again. Wanted to comment about, I noticed on some of the appointments and on the committees and boards that the mayor allocated $100 or $50 per meeting, and some of the more conservative people, like Judge Phillips, criticized when the board increased their amount 400%. And the reason why they increased it 400% this last year was because they said they had to go to all of these meetings. But now you're adding $100, $50 to some of the meetings on top of that, and I just don't understand how that's conservative, you know, for the budget.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public? Okay, is there any Zoom comments?
Robin, two minutes.
Thank you. So it is concerning to me, as I listen to this meeting and council members... and Councilmember Sandoval asking to remain on the Oversight Committee, and yet it's very clear that that is not going to happen in this meeting. It seems like it's going to be another closed session. Many of us arrive here requesting transparency. And I think this council is already showing that they're not about transparency, and they're showing their biases. There were discrepancies in the budget. And you owe it to us. You took an oath to be upfront and do your job with integrity. And frankly, I strongly disagree with many of Councilmember Sandoval's dispositions. But he has yet to fail when it comes to transparency. And I think that many of you need to follow that. So I am asking you to make that decision now and announce it now whether or not Councilmember Sandoval can remain on the Oversight Committee for the rodeo. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Zoom comments? Okay. With that, we'll come back to councilmember comments. I'll start to my left. Councilmember Salazar.
Sure. Ooh, ready for a good conversation. And I apologize if I'm about ready to derail us. So, you know, as one of the new members here, you know, one of the things I typically think about is like, what is the role of our city council, right? So I tend to think of public services, like fire, water, roads, housing. And as I look at the list of these committees, commissions, and boards that we're asked to be a part of, right? Quite often, I wonder how are these things mutually beneficial? Having, coming off the Hartnell College Board of Trustees, we had ours as well, too, right? We didn't have as many as the city of Salinas does. I had been between seven or 11. But when I came on, there was two that we decided to let go because they really weren't related to the operations and the goals and the mission of the school district. So we're okay with letting that go. So as I look at this, you know, I see the rodeo. I love cars, love the car club. Community Human Services, they're a great nonprofit organization. Regional Soccer Complex also doing great work. I mean, over the last 10 years, what we've seen happen with the Regional Soccer Complex, I mean, it's phenomenal, like taking that, what was a flood zone, into this beautiful soccer complex. The work that Suba is doing with our businesses in East Salinas. I'm not too familiar with the city's education and outreach. Is that a subcommittee, subcommittee? And the Police Activities League, right? I feel like quite often, we do have like these nonprofit organizations that come to us and say, hey, you know, we want to invite you to be on our board. But at the same time, in terms of what we do as a city, right? And I'm thinking, again, I'm thinking housing, I'm thinking traffic, I'm thinking public safety, fire, police, infrastructure, planning department. A lot of us, you know, have limited time. So I want to make sure that my time and commitment on committees, commissions, and board bring back information that is mutually beneficial. So not to pick like on the car club, or the Community Human Services, or Police Activities, or the California Rodeo. Are these committees, commissions, and boards, when we have like over 400 nonprofits in the county of Monterey? So I'm thinking, you know, maybe even an organization like Monterey Bay, MBEB, right? They're doing some work here. So I'm really kind of on the fence in terms of even some of these committees and commissions that we have. And, you know, it'll probably call for this longer conversations. I know that we have one that is a JPA, but that's not on there. Animal Shelter is a JPA. But it's just something that I want to ask our council members to think about, right? Like, we have limited time, resources, and schedules. It should be on those regarding like those larger city issues, right? So I'm just going to throw out there, since our last census count, population of the city of Salinas grew by over 10,000. So moving forward, you know, like the census is something that we definitely must and have to be on when that comes up. So just something to chew on as we move forward. But I'll end my comment there, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Salazar. Any comments to my left? Councilmember De La Rosa?
Well, maybe we need to look at these committees. Are they, are some of them really necessary? That's maybe what I'm hearing from Councilmember Salazar. There was new ones that were added by the previous council that I, you know, I'm looking at. So maybe we need to look at that before we start saying, let's let go of this one. And, I mean, really, we need to have conversations on that.
Okay.
That's my comment.
All right, fair enough. Councilmember De Arigo, anything?
I would echo that. Mayor Donahue, I think, you know, a lot of them are ad hoc committees, which we know meet when they need to meet, so they're not regular compared to the regional appointments and the standing committees. So I'm all in favor of us, you know, really taking a look at those and seeing what's important and spending our time wisely. As Councilmember Salazar said, there's a lot, I mean, some of us are serving on eight or nine committees, which is a very large amount of time. And I want to make sure that we focus on the work that needs to be done here as well. So I don't know how time sensitive this is, but something for consideration going forward.
Okay, no, thank you for bringing that up. I'll ask the city manager to comment after we go through the rest of the councilmembers.
Point of information for the city attorney. One of the committees is the City Charter and Decorum Committee. And I remember speaking with you about, the city charter really was a community group in the past. Could you speak to that committee?
Right, so the city charter is, as you know, essentially the constitution of the city. It's part of your municipal code. And so really, I think that is a separate issue from council rules and decorum. And so in the past, it was combined into one committee. But if that committee continues to exist, I would recommend that the city charter provision be taken off and it just be a council rules and decorum committee. Because the charter review process is statutorily driven, and it has a separate process that's different from council rules and decorum. So I would recommend that that be separated off as we move forward.
Thank you for the question. Any other councilmember?
Just clarifying, point of information. If the city manager or city attorney could clarify what the nature and source of the funds received from some of these other regional boards and commissions, that they're, my understanding, they're not, those stipends are not being paid out of the city's fund, right? It comes out of these different organizations. If you could provide some clarification on that.
That's correct. We can summarize that, but many of those, they have their own stipends and stuff.
Thank you.
So they're not being provided by the city.
So what, just kind of listening to the councilmember comments, what, I think we're primarily hearing that the ad hoc committees perhaps should be, could be reviewed separately. Question, are they time sensitive, or would we have enough time to do that? And then the other thing, would you point out the difference between an ad hoc committee and then the two standing committees? It would seem appropriate that we need to take some action on that this evening.
That's correct. So ad hoc committees, there's no timeframe. So a couple of ways of approaching it, right? You can ask staff to bring back sort of a report on them, and then make a decision, and not appoint. Or you can appoint, and then the subcommittee can work with staff and bring back a recommendation, which is probably better. And then we can discuss whether we want to continue it or not. And they're not time sensitive. So that's different than some of the others, like the rodeo. Committee actually, per our agreement, calls for one. So to change that one up, we would need to actually.
Go through the process.
We'll go through the process of the changing, you know, modifying the agreement, updating the agreement.
Is it time sensitive?
No, it's not.
Within this quarter, let's say?
No, it's not. But it does call for a quarterly update and so forth like that. So I would recommend that you bring it, ask staff to work with the subcommittees. It's your point, and we'll schedule based on time, and then we'll bring back a report to whether we want to continue on that ad hoc committee or not.
Relative to the ad hoc committees?
Correct, relative to the ad hoc committees.
But as we kind of move forward and before we?
So finance, some of those committees, you need to point.
That action should occur this evening, along with the JPAs, you know. And I'll just throw in, I was startled to find, and you know, the number may be moving around, but there are 2,200 special districts in California. They're not all in Monterey County, but they all have, you know, staff, public notice, a source of revenue. And the $100 or $150 stipend for attending those meetings comes out of that. Not, it's not a city expenditure. It is a council opportunity responsibility or something we're supposed to do. The JPAs, though, we belong and we have to participate. Okay. So with that, would anybody, having heard everything, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Mayor Donahue? I would like to ask, even though Councilmember Sandoval is fine with this, he did request from his colleagues to see if anybody would be interested in allowing him to be on the rodeo committee.
Right, and which we can do. We can take a motion, see if there's a second, and then open it, and then have discussion relative to the motion, which could isolate that item.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the list as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, all right. And then, Councilmember Barajas?
If I might be able to present a substitute motion to only approve the standing committee board appointments, the regional board appointments, and to request staff to come back with a report at a future council meeting date on ad hoc committees and what is strategic and relevant for the city's continuing and ongoing participation.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion with a second.
That's what we're voting for.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor, and to the maker of the motion, I would note that the Animal Shelter JPA requires there be an appointment from the city as well. And so I would ask that you consider including that in your recommended motion, please.
And if I could, yes, the Animal Shelter is now in fact a JPA. So that just means there just needs to be an appointment, like any of the regional boards. So, yeah, so that should be isolated from.
I'll accept that.
All right, all right.
Second.
Okay, so that is seconded. Any, and then, okay. So with that motion, that kind of addresses what Councilmember Sandoval is concerned about. Can I call for the question?
Yes, you may.
Okay. Just checking, it's been 12 years since I've done this.
Calling for the vote on the substitute motion. Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, and with that, and then we will have, should they do reports? Can I have each councilmember do, provide their appointments to their commissions? So we'll start with Councilmember Sandoval. If you can read your appointment list to the various commissions.
Sorry, you're coming up. Cardwell, you should do that during the report, so give me one second.
Okay, we'll go, does everyone have their commission list? Okay, do you have it? Okay, good, okay.
New appointment will be Kathleen Brinker to Measure E and to Measure G, Peter Salaya.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barrera, any updates from you?
Yes, sir. Measure E Committee, Jesús Valenzuela. And Traffic and Transportation Commission, Orlando Osornio. And I just want to say thank you to Andres Conceco. He's been our Traffic and Transportation Commissioner for two years. I want to thank him for his service this evening. I will be appointing Orlando Osornio. Thank you.
Councilmember Barajas?
Tonight, I will be reappointing Mr. David Eugene Bigum Jr. to the Airport Commission. I will be appointing Berenice Larios Fabian to the Library and Community Services Commission, reappointing Eric Mora to the Measure E Oversight Committee, appointing Ms. Jessica Almanza Larios to the Planning Commission, and reappointing Mr. Jose Julio Garcia to the Public Art Commission.
Councilmember De Arigo?
Okay, I have one new appointment for the Measure G Committee. It will be Virginia Pierce, taking Mr. Salazar's place, for obvious reasons. And then I did want to let David, who's in the audience, know that I am working on a spot for you, to place you somewhere where you're going to be amazing. So I'm going to keep the PCAC as it is right now, because it sounds like there's a little, there's a little bit of turmoil right now, and I don't want to upset the apple cart and be disruptive. So I'm going to leave that one there. And Leah Miller, right now, is the chair of that committee, so it makes sense to kind of keep her in there to settle things down and get things moving forward. But I haven't forgotten about you, so thank you.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Okay. I am appointing, I'm appointing all my commissioners. And I'm going to start first with the Historic Resource Board. Larry will stay on that, Larry Harahua. Library Community Service Commission, Maria Cervantes is my new appointee. Measure G, Cher Howard. PCAC, Vanessa Vázquez. Planning Commissioner, Eva Marie Martinez. Traffic and Transportation Commission, José Guerra. And my Airport and Measure E, I'll give that the next meeting.
Councilmember Salazar?
Yes, in terms of appointments, I'd like to appoint to the PCAC, Yolanda Hayes. Salinas Planning Commission, Marcelino Mars Racamora. Traffic and Transportation Commission, Paul Hernandez. And at our next meeting, I'll have remaining appointments.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I will be maintaining the status quo with the exception of Measure E, that will be Yedera Hobby. Measure G, Amy Salmina. And Leo De La Rosa will be on the PCAC. So those will be my commission appointments. And with that, we'll close with councilmember comments and reports. I'll start with Councilmember Sandoval. You ready to go?
Ready to go, thank you. Well, I'd like to congratulate the Juneteenth Committee for the wonderful Kwanzaa event in the Old Town Farmers Market. They had our projects, recipes, drumming, and food trivia. It was a great community event. Congratulations to my holiday light winners. And we had a special Santa and Mrs. Claus visit, so that was great. I attended Santa Rita Elementary School's Winter Wonderland. First time they've ever had anything like that. The kids were so excited. And Santa and Mrs. Claus also attended those events. I also got to visit the Three Kings event. They had camels, camel rides, and petting zoo. So I highly recommend it for all of you to attend. I had a great community meeting in the Laurelwood area. Thank you to the chief, Public Works, HR, Parks and Rec, IT, everyone who showed up. We had, you know, some great discussions, especially after the meeting. I was contacted for an update on the Laurelwood Park area, park area. Some of the residents wanted to follow up on the meeting we had. And we also had some trouble with the residents roche returning some of their ballots for the traffic calming project. And so I'm really hoping we bring that back to the traffic calming, I mean, the Traffic Commission for a consideration for a second round of ballots. Ms. Lee brought up the Sunshine Ordinance for nonprofits we work with. I think that'd be great to foster some more transparency. And one of the last things I had was, I did get contacted for concern with a health and safety issue at the farmer's market. I'll be reaching out to Councilmember De Arigo about that for some of my residents. And then finally, I'd like to wish one of the hardest working men I know, my dad, a happy birthday. Today's his birthday, so happy birthday, pa.
Thank you. Happy birthday, pa.
Thank you, councilmember. Good note to end on. Councilmember Barrera?
Happy birthday to you, pa. Happy birthday to you, pa. Well, Monterey Salinas Transit just received a twenty-two million dollar SURF project. And this is this is exciting news. A lot of work from the MST staff, lots of players. Thanks to our Congressman, Mr. Panetta, Senator John Lehrer, I mean, great work. It's been a few years now. This SURF project is really going to fund its capital investments, connecting Salinas to Monterey even faster to be able to get our our hardworking people to work on a timely fashion. And I want to commend the City Manager, his staff, the employee gala, and Mayor Craig's word, it was a hoot. It was fantastic. I want to commend you, sir. I want to acknowledge the committee that worked for three months to make this happen, which was Alexis Mejía, Arlin Gutierrez, Christina Cifuentes, Diana Caliso, Jessica Bardual, Juan Carlos Ruiz, and Marco Sotelo. This was an exciting time where the administration honored their hardworking staff through many years. Jim Pia, a gentleman that just retired, forty years serving the people of Salinas. So it was a great event, very sincere morale booster. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Staff. There's a lot of great projects here for 2025. I mean, the Firehouse Senior Center is going to get a little work. We're going to get some new bathrooms as well. Cluster Park, thanks to the hardworking staff, is going to get a big facelift. I mean, it's a great park, but it's going to be great. So 2025 is going to be great. The Hebron Family Center is is coming through already. And I want to thank all the the workers that are working on our sidewalks and our streets, doing some good work. So thank you to everybody. And hopefully, as I say, I want to welcome my new colleagues to the People's House. It's going to be fun. But thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrera. Councilmember Barra.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've had a busy holiday break and participated in a number of community events. I had the privilege of participating in a ride along with our newest solo bee officer, Officer Connor Auger, a few weeks ago. He's a Palma High graduate and a Salinas native, and I'm excited to have been there on his first day riding solo on the job. He had just finished his training the day before, so it was an experience for both himself and mine. And it was just an overall good experience getting to see first hear firsthand from a new officer that chose to join Salinas PD and serve his community on what that experience was like and the challenges our police face in maintaining our community safe. Also had the opportunity to volunteer with the Seventy-Third Annual Children's Shopping Tour hosted by the Salinas Valley Chamber of Commerce Foundation. This event supported over three hundred Salinas children by providing winter clothing essentials. I wanted to thank Northridge Mall and the participating stores, the event sponsors, and the many volunteers who made this day so special for our local youth. Also had the opportunity to participate as a guest judge in the 2024 Holiday Home Lighting Competition, along with a few of other of my colleagues here on the dais. And I had the honor of presenting the Holiday Cheer Award to longtime District One resident, Ms. Sally Leal. Her home is full of festive spirit decorated not just for Christmas but for all holidays. So I welcome you to visit her home, swing by on Ryder Avenue, and cheer yourself up with whatever spirit or with whatever holiday you're celebrating at the time. Also joined the One Brotherhood Motorcycle Club for their annual Adopt a Fam event, where they delivered Christmas gifts to Salinas families in need door to door on their motorcycles for over ten years. And I was proud to present with them with a commendation on behalf of the City Council, recognizing their dedication to bringing joy to families in our community. Also met with members of the Center for Community Advocacy, Monterey Bay Central Labor Council, and Building Healthy Communities at Nativity at Creek Park. This gathering was an opportunity to introduce myself as their new District One representative, learn about the critical work that these organizations are doing in our communities, and hear directly from Salinas residents. And it's very clear that housing remains a top of mind issue for our community members. And I look forward to engaging with them and these different organizations to addressing these issues. On traffic, I had the opportunity to do some door to door outreach on Las Casitas Drive. There is a Las Casitas Drive Traffic Calming Plan that voting just closed on January 2nd. And I am pleased to announce that that project was approved with one hundred percent of support from all ballots submitted from the residents. So looking forward to seeing some relief being brought to residents in that community. Also had the opportunity to present to select Ms. Jennifer Vázquez as a District One recipient of the current cycle of the Neighborhood Beautification Grant Program. Mrs. Vázquez's project will beautify the dog park at Nativity at Creek Park. We're going to see some neat improvements there. And I'm excited to see this project come to fruition and help enhance the experience of dogs and their owners as well. And I also want to acknowledge and thank our Salinas firefighters who have joined the the efforts to fight the devastating fires in Southern California. Their bravery and service are deeply appreciated, and I wish them all a safe return to their families and to our community. And finally, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the Human Resources Department, Office of the City Clerk, and the Office of the City Manager for their onboarding process and responsiveness in this transition. And I'm looking forward to continuing our work together over the next four years and serving the people of Salinas.
Councilmember Barra, I must say whoever said youth is wasted on the young did not have you in mind. Councilmember DeRigo, anything from you?
Yeah, you wore me out over there. I thought I was busy, but I think you got me beat, hands down. Gosh, there were so many events over the holidays. I I could not even list them all, but there were a lot of great things happening here. I did do the the Home Lighting Tour with Jose. It was really fun. And just the holiday spirit in this city was amazing. I was so blown away about the beautiful displays that people had in their homes and and the amount of time that they took to make our our city and their streets really, you know, amazing. So I want to thank the city staff for their patience. We've been, all of us have been hitting them up for time to explain what they do on a day to day basis and get us up to speed. And we've got a lot to learn, I know myself in particular. So I want to thank them for the time they devoted to helping me learn more about our city. And I'm going to be holding my first community conversation. It's going to be next week on January 22nd at the Welcome Center, which is slash Train Center slash Historic Park, and just inviting people from District Three to come out and share their their thoughts, concerns, and ideas with me. I don't expect to have answers for all of them, but I am excited to hear from them as a group. And so I'm hoping we'll have some people come out. So we'll have two different sessions, one between 12:00 and 12:30 for those that can sneak away at lunchtime, and then one from 7:00 to 7:30 in the evening for those that can't sneak away during the day. So looking forward to having that one. And I'm hoping to host one every month, getting to know neighbors, friends, and those in District Three a little bit better. And I can I call myself the official complaint department. So everybody seems to, you know, really care about their neighborhoods and their streets and their sidewalks and and such. So that's that's a good thing that people care about where they live and and the city that they live in. So looking forward to hosting that as well. And just want to thank all of you for coming out and staying with us tonight. And those of you that are on Zoom, thank you for joining in, and look forward to having more productive meetings like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeLaRosa.
Okay, yes, it was a very busy month in December for a lot of us. And I just want to thank the community that came out to all the events, the the tree lighting, the holiday tour bus. And I want to thank Steinbeck Real Tea. I want to thank the Rotary, the two Rotary, Santa Lucia, that I belong to. And I, do you belong to a downtown?
Yes.
Downtown Rotary. They were part of it, and the city, and and of course, Sophie and the staff that that were so instrumental in in doing all this. And my resident from Rossi Rico area that she did a beautiful job. I mean, there were so many decorations. I have never seen so many decorations like I did this past year, because it's past 24. Just a lot. And that really tells you a lot. People were, again, we had the pandemic, but people came out this year, really. And it was just beautiful. And also, I attended the Buddhist temple, bell ringing that they do there at the Buddhist temple. It's a hundred and eighty rings that you have to do. But the ones that were there that we attended for the the ceremony, how many did you do, Dennis? You only did one? One ring?
No, I did the two you were supposed to.
Oh, you did two. I did one ring. Okay, so anyways, there's a significance to that. And I believe it's it's good, bringing in the good, right? Yeah, bringing in the good. So that was very, very well attended. And then I attended an ACE meeting on January the 8th. I also went to the gala that the city put on, the city employees. And it was fun. It was a fun night for all the employees being recognized. There was good food, good music. I mean, just the smiles on the faces of the employees. That means a lot. It means a lot to bring people together and and enjoying. And thank you to our City Manager. Boy, you can really get out on that dance floor. But anyways, it was fun. And then my big concern right now is, of course, the prostitution going on on Casa de Maderas in all that area, the businesses. And it's it's not getting better, it's getting worse. So I am asking staff to set up a meeting as soon as possible so that we can hear the concerns of all those residents and come up with a solution. That's one. And also for the residents from District Four that are that are listening right now, staff is also be patient, busy, trying to set up the rest of the district meetings within District Four and probably other districts. So be patient. We are going to meet with you. And I also want to bring up the traffic calming. I received a call, and I'm very concerned about the process, people being put on list on the list in the past, and and never heard anything else about where they are now. So I think I would like to ask our City Manager if we could have some kind of a report from Public Works to to give to the council, because some of us are new, and also the public, on how how do you do that process of traffic calming, and what happens after you do the voting and so forth? People don't know. Thank you.
And Councilmember Salazar.
Yes, you know, just want to wish everybody a happy happy New Year, looking forward to 2025 and working with all of you. Looking at my role as a new City Council member, I'm going to let the needs and concerns of my residents kind of guide my politics. I'm going to stick to that. So in terms of traffic, housing, water, there's a lot to be to be done there. In terms of things that I've been involved with, I'm going to go back a little bit back to December. Did have an opportunity to attend the Christmas Parade of Lights. Just want to thank all the organizers there for putting that on and the the financial supporters that came in. It was it was a it was a great event. I mean, it was it was packed. Always happy to see Santa Claus there. Also had the opportunity to participate and be part of the home Holiday Home Lighting Competition. Again, also just want to thank all of the city staff and community leaders that made that happen. It was fun, and it was insightful. And I'm just going to go ahead and plug our residents in South Salinas. Very touching story to hear that we had a neighborhood that spelled Merry Christmas and gave each neighbor a letter to post on top of their house. And that after, I don't know, I think it might be like forty years, those things still still exist. I think some letters may have got lost but got replaced. But in terms of Christmas spirit, hands down. Also, I believe on December 17th, we had the Holiday Home Lighting Competition presentation. Kudos to District Six, which is my district, for for winning and all those that won in their respective City Council seats. For those of you that have never seen Candy Cane Lane, I highly recommend it. In speaking with some of those neighbors, there's a couple of recommendations that they had that they want to bring before the city in terms of like public safety and just handling some of that. It's a very active neighborhood and just was very proud and honored to be a part of that and see a neighborhood come together. Do want to thank and acknowledge folks at our El Gavilan Library this winter break, and that they had coordinated, it was a pixel art activity. Let me tell you, that multipurpose room was packed, full of parents and students. I remember attending one of those, might have been last summer, and, you know, there was some art for young children to pick. This time, I mean, it was just a whole huge variety of of art and watching those children in action. I'm a real big advocate of the Forty Youth Developmental Assets. And having been a child psychology major in the past, watching the kids in their fine motor movement and the bonding was very special to see. And just want to acknowledge our library staff for making that happen. If you've not been to El Gavilan Library, please stop by. It's beautiful. In terms of things kind of coming up, I am looking forward to our strategic planning. For those of you that don't know me or have not worked with me in the past, I've worked in the nonprofit sector for about twenty-five years now, ten years of those providing professional development to nonprofit organizations. And I'm a very big fan of strategic planning. I'm hoping out of that, I know quite often those tend to be very kind of ambitious goals, but if we can walk out of that with like three goals that we see for the the city and, you know, kind of those subcategories, I'm looking forward towards. I I know some people don't like strategic planning process, but I do. I know that it can be long. As we go through that, I also want to make sure that we also have like an extensive or adequate, what we feel to be adequate, community engagement component as we kind of lead our city. A lot of that is going to be contingent upon what we hear from our residents. And so I want to make sure that that community engagement element is there, and we're hearing from our residents in terms of what what they would like to see. I'd really like to see those grounded in terms of where they fall in terms of quality of life, right? Because I think that's what a lot of this stuff boils boils down to. I do want to reach out to our staff regarding Bronda Road. Bronda Road has always kind of been a hot topic. If you live in Salinas, Bronda Road, Davis Road, we have some other roads here in Salinas. As some of you know, there's the construction going on. Bronda Road, you know, as you know, the surface level is, I think last time I looked, the surface level of D. But residents do want to know, as you know, people driving along Bronda Road tend to jump into neighborhoods and kind of cut through neighborhoods and run along roads that run parallel. So that's brought up some concerns. And there are a couple of streets in particular that have been affected. And there's some residents that want to know what they can do, which may include putting up some additional stop signs or traffic calming bumps. In terms of sidewalk, I'm also probably going to reach out to the city as well. In our district, over on Princeton Court, it's a kind of a short court, really needs some attention. I would say the sidewalks have gone up maybe like maybe as high as like a foot and a half, maybe two feet. Very difficult sidewalk to to walk on. Also, we've got another one at Eldorado Park, going southbound on Eldorado. There's a, it looks like a tree. It's really uprooted one of our sidewalks. And I just want to make sure folks going to our local park don't have to go over that. As a kid, I remember, you know, we used to love those things, you know, if you had a BMX bike. I mean, those things were those things made for great ramps. But if you're just trying to, you know, walk your 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 dog or walk with a friend, it can be tricky. Also had an opportunity to meet with the folks with the Salinas Welcome Center, including, I believe it's Craig Kaufman, former Congressman Sam Far, Dr. Willie LaWalle, regarding the Salinas Welcome Center. Some of you may or may not know, it's one of forty-two in the state of California. One of the goals being, you know, kind of marketing our downtown. As you know, people who get off the bus, you know, we have people that, you know, they may miss out on an opportunity to support some of our local, you know, small bookstores, restaurants. We've got some small boutiques. And not to mention, I think it was the San Francisco Examiner that recently recognized that restaurant is like one of the top places to dine at. to dine at, all within walking distance. Two more things, I also just want to thank our firefighters and the community, or communities of Los Angeles affected by those firefighters. Today at this meeting, I just wanted to kind of put that question out there in terms of Salinas firefighters or police, if they've had an opportunity to go out there, only because sometimes we, there's a lot to learn in tragedies like these to make sure that we can plan for ourselves. I think it was mentioned that the size of the fires was like equivalent to the area from Salinas to Watsonville to Hollister. So just imagine all of that going up in flames within a matter, matter of days. I know it's not budget season, but I just want to give forewarning to some of the department heads. Typically, when I look at budgets, organizational budgets, there are three and I'm going to add a fourth things that I typically look at. You know, one, naturally, I'm just looking at just general operating costs. So I really want to know from like our police department, like that building and what that operational cost is, our, the fire department, kind of what that cost is operating our, our stations, those operational costs, our libraries and where we're at, our recreation centers. I just like, I have a general idea of the general, just operating expenses, right? Keeping the doors open. In terms of like programs, if there are specific programs being running, just like to know just out of interest, like what those program costs are. Lastly, like personnel, I mean, providing these services that all of you do requires like, you know, staff time. So just would like to know what each department's kind of budget is. I know people have different strategies and methods when they're looking at annual budgets. This is just my way in particular, so I know a lot of you are familiar with your operating budgets. And so I'll probably just ask for, you know, kind of like a short narrative. I don't want a thesis, I don't want to stress stuff out, because I know a lot of questions do come up during the annual budget process. And lastly, in that, one thing that I'm also normally interested in looking at is like work that's being performed on a contractual basis. So if we have some work being done out of the planning department, like if, if we're constantly having the contract worked out to have it completed, I would like to know how much we're spending annually on, on that. And that concludes my, my report. I normally don't talk this long, but today's a special day, being day one.
Okay, I normally don't talk this long. That is, that's in the official minutes, right, Patty? Okay.
Second.
You added yourself, not me, so, all right. I will just kind of echo what everyone said and what you heard. It's certainly been a busy city since this council took office, dominated by a lot of terrific holiday events and, and I think a reminder of what a terrific city we have, how people care about the city, how they care about helping each other. I would like to call attention to, you know, part, part of the mix of all that generosity was our police department giving away a couple thousand toys on, on Christmas Day, you know, so that there always to be applauded for that effort and generosity. And, and, you know, and, and the chief got involved and even made his, invited his family to help out and they were delighted to do it. So I want to call attention to their generosity. There are a lot of terrific things in, as council member DeLa Rosa alluded, you know, the diversity of the city, the Buddhist temple. Council member Sandoval was at the Quanza event in downtown. So a lot going on since, since we took office. So, so I just kind of want to echo everyone's comments that it was busy and I was glad to have the opportunity to participate in my share. One of the things, the quick comment I would like to make is I think the importance of the commissions. There are a lot of serious issues here and I, and I certainly echo and support, you know, the council being focused on the big issues because the housing, roads, those are big issues. The commission structure offers an opportunity for those who participate and for the public, I think, to be in a, in a more deliberative setting. Because if you attend any, if you've been on those commissions, attend those meetings, you know, there, there is an opportunity to participate, they're publicly noticed, often televised, and staff is there. So those are, I think, important appointments and I, and I think the commission structure is something to really be attentive to and take advantage of in a positive sense. And I know, and I know there will be a number of community gatherings by, by, by each of the districts. Transparency, information is important, but education is important. So for instance, you know, I, I remain startled, you know, 2,200 special districts throughout the state. And so a lot of times, somebody thinks the city's doing something. I got in trouble with my wife because of something Republic Services did. So then I had to explain, now, now we love Republic Services and they picked up my Christmas tree on time. So this is, this is not, I have any problems with public services. But I got in trouble with my wife because the bill went up. I said, but we didn't do that. And, you know, so, so it's, it, this, what people need to understand is, and I think that it's also a bit of an education for folks to understand when, when you're on city council, there's, there's more than one dais most of us are usually involved in. And that's fine, and we signed up for it and we're happy to do it and we, we need to manage it. But these other entities can have taxing authority and can raise rates independent of anything the city did. Now, there may be a city representative sitting on the body, but, but it is important, I think, for folks to get a better understanding of that, particularly in, you know, challenging economic times in terms of some of those things. So, so I would just like to echo the importance of commissions themselves and I think the opportunity to sit on a commission and then invite the, our residents to also look at those meetings as a place to get things teed up in front of staff and then kind of, you know, eventually getting to us. Of course, we're always going to be available to really kind of air something out. I like the commissions. So with that, I think, I think we've concluded our first, first meeting. And, yeah, we, we, we did it. And so we are adjourned. We did. And I want to note for the record, normally, we meet on Tuesdays, but the next council meeting will be on January 27th, a Monday. So it'll be plenty of public notice, but I, I, I used to believe, I assume it's still true, that the Salinas City Council has the highest ratings on Channel 25. So we want to get the word out early. The next meeting is on a Monday instead of a Tuesday. So with that, we're adjourned and thank you everyone for coming.